Okay, I think that I'm going to call the meeting to order. Could I have a motion to adopt remote participation as written in our agenda, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote. Well, Pam is not here, so we're starting with Erica.
Yeah, Erica Elsie Bolton, yes.
Steve Ladue conquered, yes.
Sharon Musto Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stulaneeden, yes.
Alice DeLuca, so yes.
Very good. Julie, do we have any public comments pre-submitting?
We do not, Jeff.
Okay, very good. Bring up the consent agenda. The consent agenda is only, I believe, one grant that was detailed in the agenda. Or in the packet. So is there a motion to accept the monthly grant as in the packet?
So moved. Second.
Very good. Any discussion on that monthly grant? It's pretty straightforward. So Erica?
Erica Elsie Bolton, yes.
Steve Ladue conquered, yes.
Sharon Musto Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stulaneeden, yes.
Alice DeLuca, so yes.
Very good. Brings us to the chairs report. Are there any particular notes for the good of the organization? There's Pam. Hi, Pam.
Hello, sorry I'm late.
I have one for the good of the organization. It is to thank Alice DeLuca for being chair at our last meeting. For those of you who don't know, Alice was chair for a number of years during some of the most challenging times to be chair in the history of the school committee. So she is most expert in that. Okay, and thank you, Alice, for doing that. And Charlene has joined us. Very good. Pam has a comment.
I have a thank you as well. I want to thank Kevin for coming and sitting through a very, very long act in town meeting and doing a fantastic presentation and so went well and I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Actually, from now that you brought that up from the members, from the membership, I've heard many comments about Kevin and Nikki at town meetings that basically follow the same path that you just mentioned, Pam. And many school committee members actually brought that to my attention. So it was a very successful town meeting season from our point of view. And part of that was due to the preparation of Kevin, Nikki, and actually Steve and the FinCom was very useful in that as well. So thank you all. I think we'll talk a little bit about that a little bit later. Next, I'd like to bring us up to a discussion, one of our long-term Minute Man favorite topics, the minutes. So I do have a few comments for you on the minutes. Let me also remind you that you got a motion, actually an update from Julia, that our June 11th and June 23 meetings will be in person. Okay. Okay, so the minutes have been a pain point of our school committee for many, many years, and we're not the only one. And there are a lot of reasons for this. One reason is changes in the open meeting law over time. Another one is that-
How long does it take to drive there? We could probably sneak in.
Yeah. So I think Kristin Patterson, you are not on mute. So we've gone through many, many variations of methodologies of creating minutes and many different people who are working on it. And we are currently in a time in which the minutes are taking so long to produce and so long for us to verify. That means that we, you know, have to read them and find errors and bring into people's attention and vote on them. That it is, is in my opinion, becoming not a practical thing to do. So what I have, what I've done is informally, I've, actually, so one of the goals for the minutes are, of course, it meets the needs of the open meeting law. They present reasonable details and flavor of meeting. And it's possible to create and review them in a reasonable timeframe. That's what we like to do for our minutes. If they're legal, they give us the flavor of the meeting and we don't waste an enormous amount of time creating them and then revising them. And what you don't know behind the scenes is that on some of the minutes, especially in the more complicated meetings, it could take four or eight hours of work to produce what we've been producing. That's just not possible to move forward. So what I did informally is I said, I think I'd like to take this on, you know, this year and get it to a point where we can keep up to date with our minutes and the workload is not onerous on anybody either, our recorder Julia, whoever is the secretary or the school committee is involved. So what I've done informally is I've had a few in-person meetings with Julia that were very valuable. And we spent a long time discussing a strategy for creating minutes that meet that, those goals. Now, one way to meet the is legal goal is to simply give a verbatim transcript of everything that has happened. And we've done that occasionally. And those verbatim transcripts can go for five or 10 or 15 pages, and that's just not working out for us. I think that if you have minutes that are 10 pages long and you're reviewing them, you're not really going to focus on them sufficiently to find the things that we really should be improving on them. So what we've done, Julie and I, is we've come up with some draft guidelines for creating the minutes. I say draft because they got a long way to go. And what we did is we took two sets of minutes. And Julia applied the guidelines in the draft in a first attempt to do that. And we looked at it and we had our legal counsel, Peter Sumners, involved in this. So he did a single draft of those two sets of minutes, one of which you're going to see during that executive session today. And we sent him to Peter and he gave us quite a long list of comments. And we took his comments and we revised the guidelines and we did a second draft of those minutes following the guidelines and he approved of our second draft. And Julie, if I could share my screen, please?
Certainly.
I would like to show you the guidelines. They really aren't quite ready for show and tell, but I'll show them to you anyways. If I can find them. I think this is it. Okay, can you see that?
Yep.
Okay, so it's just, you know, one page and I'm not going to read it out loud. You can read it. It gives the motivation for doing this. The minute should include, the top part is all the technical stuff, right? Then comes the hard part. The hard part is how much is a decision and how much detail to give on everything that happens during a meeting? And they range from just mentioning the name of the topic all the way to doing things verbatim. So you have to find what is the sweet spot of doing that? And so this is an early draft of trying to put in writing what should be included in the minutes to keep them legal and short. And the hard part is taking a discussion, a key discussion and summarizing it without a lot of extra verbiage or pages or too many unnecessary details. So this is the first draft. And one of the comments that Peter made when I had a discussion with him about how detailed will we need to be, I'm really not having a good grasp of that. And what he said is that the truth is that this really is and aren't more than a science. And some people over time get very good at it, but there's a lot of controversy and a lot of people are having the same sort of discussions that we're having. Okay? So I don't think I need to share my screen anymore. So got a long way to go. And what I, what I'd like to continue doing is to keep this a little bit informal. You're going to see one set of minutes tonight, which we are going to discuss during executive session. And do a few more using these guidelines and revise the guidelines. And eventually possibly create a minute subcommittee to finalize guidelines and, you know, to take everybody's comments into consideration. To get to the point where we will just have written guidelines moving forward. Instead of just throwing it in people's lap and say, well, you know, do whatever you think. And then, you know, the superintendent may have their opinion and the school committee may have their opinion and they're caught in the middle of it, which has happened in the past. So that is what I've been working on. Julie has been very helpful. Our legal counsel has been helpful. And do you have any overall questions on what we hope to do with this and how it will hopefully solve a big problem that I foresee as chair having, you know, to kind of oversee all this stuff? Any kind of questions or comments? Alice?
That was just the executive session minutes that you were talking about there, right? That document?
We're starting with executive session, but reality, when we get to the full minutes, they won't be much different. The guidelines won't be much different. Because the same rules applies. You want them to be legal, detailed enough to give you a flavor of what happened, but not verbatim with a lot of extra pages and words that you have to read through. And finding that middle ground is very challenging and will require a lot of practice to do. And you'll see one example of that tonight. Any other questions or comments about what we're trying to do here? Okay, now, the, the, the person who is responsible for the minutes is the, is the secretary. And Erica has, has been our secretary, but she is going to be stepping down from that position. And Erica, would you like to share with the membership why that is?
Yes, thanks, Jeff. So yeah, I did suffer a concussion that I'm recovering from, which is why my screen is off. And it has been off for the past several meetings, for those of you that have been wondering. But the job of secretary, as Jeff has described, it, it does involve quite a bit of reading and writing, editing, video watching. And at this point, it, just for the sake of my recovery, it's better for me to step down and let someone else do it.
Especially since over the next few months until, you know, the end of the current terms, there's going to be an extra amount of work because we're trying to develop guidelines and there may be additional drafts being done just to see what they look like. So I knew that Erica had had a concussion. I've seen a lot of people trying to recover from concussions. So that's why she has decided to step down as secretary. And that's why you have the item in your agenda, election of officer, to appoint interim secretary to fulfill the remainder of Erica's term. I am going to suggest somebody for this. I'm going to suggest Charlene. And one of the reasons I want to suggest her is her legal background has become very useful in developing the guidelines for the minutes and communicating with our legal counsel as is necessary. So if there are no more questions or comments on the discussion of minutes, I would like to move on to the election of an interim secretary. Alice?
I'd like to move that we appoint Charlene Cabral as the interim secretary of the school committee.
Do I have a second? Okay, very good. Any other nominees for the very fun position of secretary?
Just have a question, Jeff. Is Charlene okay with this?
Yes, I was, I was asked if I would be willing, so I'm all right with it.
The sales job Jeff says Gabe about doing the, doing the job. I just curious.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I would be very honest of what's involved in doing this. We had a fairly long conversation and she is willing to do it. Any other comments or questions? No, very well then, roll call vote.
Pam Nurse-Stockton, yes.
Erica Elsie, and thank you, Charlene, for stepping up. Yes, Bolton.
Steve Ladue conquered, yes.
Yes, Charlene, you do vote. Can vote for yourself.
Charlene Cabral Lancaster, yes.
Sharon Musto Lexington, yes.
I was actually looking for Dover.
Yeah, Jeff Stulaneeden, yes.
Alice DeLuca, so yes.
Okay, so again, thank you, Erica, for all the work that you put into it. I know that it was, it was quite a bit. And thank you, Charlene, for taking over for interim, interim secretary. Do you have any comments?
I actually wanted to make one retroactive comment because I wasn't here at the beginning of the meeting because I had another meeting and as you are aware. But I wanted to thank Michelle Rizendi because she came to the Lancaster town meeting. And I don't know if she went to many of them, but she came to Lancaster and I really appreciated having her there.
And Michelle is here, so I know that she heard your comment. So thank you, Michelle. All right, very good. Great. Thank you all. Principals report. Katie, what do you have for us?
Great. Thanks. Let's get started. So tonight, River is going to start with some of our student reports and then we'll move on to Riley. But before we get started, I just want to publicly thank River. As some of you may know, River is one of our graduating seniors. So the time is ticking by with River being at Minuteman. So again, River, just thank you so much for all of your support with the student reports this year. It's been an absolute pleasure to have you at Minuteman. We wish you the best of luck in the future. River will be graduating in, I'm sure they can tell you how many days. So it'll be very soon. So it's actually the River's last school committee meeting. So I'm going to turn it over to River in just a second. River is going to talk about the Senior Spirit Week this week, some upcoming graduation and awards night information. And then we'll turn it over to Riley, who will talk about prom, national honors induction ceremony as well. So take it away, River.
All right. Well, first off, thank you. So as, as the year is ending, this week is Senior Spirit Week. We started off Monday with Adam Sandler Day, being little copycats of him. And then today was beach party where we had the Pona ice truck outside and dunking, dunking teachers today for a dollar ball. I unfortunately didn't get one. I got close, so we got very close. But some teachers were dunked today. And then tomorrow is country versus country club. I'm, I have my country club all set, even a golf club, I think. And Thursday, Jersey, Jersey Thursday, and we will have a staff versus senior softball game. And then Friday we'll end with our seniors future, whatever they're heading towards. We'll dress up as that. So I got some pictures of Anna Sandler Day. Can you guess some for today? But yeah. And we have the upcoming graduation and awards night. So senior awards night will be June 6th from 5:30 to 8:00. And this will be when awards and scholarships will be distributed at Minuteman to seniors. And then the graduation is the next day, June 7th, from 2:00 to 4:00 at Lower Memorial Auditorium. And then seniors will arrive at Minuteman before around 10:30 for some practice and then hop on a bus. So that'll be it.
Great. Any questions for River on either the Spirit Week or the upcoming graduation or awards night?
Alice?
Not really a question, just congratulations. And I'm sure you're counting down the days and I hope you have a really great time.
Thank you.
Great. Thanks. We'll turn it over to Riley.
All right, for our National Honor Society induction ceremony, 24 students were inducted this year until National Honor Society. The ceremony took place on May 2nd in the theater, following a dinner in the Paul Revere Room. Huge thanks to Culinary for making such a delicious meal for the students and parents. It was great. Mackenzie Kaitaki, Josh and David, who are all students at Minuteman, gave speeches on the four main pillars of NHS. Mr. English and Ms. Bouchard both gave speeches to congratulate the students. It was a wonderful night and also many parents and siblings and other family members came to the ceremony to support their children on this big achievement.
And then prom.
All right, so prom took place last Friday on May 10th at Sky Meadow Country Club in Nashua, New Hampshire. There was amazing views. It was a fun-filled night with lots of dancing. It was amazing. There's also a photo booth and a photographer so that students could take pictures with friends and also dates and other people at prom. There was a buffet-style dinner that was served that had salad rolls, pasta, vegetables and chicken parm. We also did prom king and queen for each grade along with court members. Sorry, I was unable to find some pictures to add to the slide. But our venue was beautifully decorated and it turned out amazing thanks to the help of staff at Sky Meadow, our class advisors, Ms. Copperthorn and Mr. Bradley, but also more importantly, Ms. Bordeaux. She helped us create these amazing centerpieces and other decorations for prom and went there beforehand to help set everything up. So big thanks to her and it was a great turnout and it was so much fun.
Great, thanks. Any questions for Riley about prom or the National Honor Society?
Just one question on prom. How many students participated this year about?
Um, well, I know for sure that we sold over 247 tickets.
I can give you the answer on that.
You know, it always-
We were like two tickets away from being sold out. So that's like around 260. 60k.
And that was a junior senior prom, right? Both classes to 10. Well, that's just great. That's wonderful.
Great. Any other questions? Great. Well, thank you, Riley and River. We appreciate it. Next, I'm going to turn it over to Christina Juzen, who is one of our Skills USA advisors.
Thank you very much for having us tonight. So we have two of our Skills USA officers here today who are also gold medal winners. So they're going to do most of the talking and then kick it back to me at the very end. So we have Kaitaki and Erin. I don't know who's going to start, but take it away.
Hi, my name is Kaitaki. I'm a junior in environmental science. I'm also serving as this year's president of Skills USA and I was a gold medalist for Career Pathways Ag and Natural Resources. So as you can see, we have 54 competitors in 31 out of the 110 competitions. But more importantly, and in addition to that, we had eight gold medalists and which comprises of around 17 students because we had a couple of team events. We also had three silver meddling teams, three bronze teams, and then we also got a state officer elected, which is really exciting. I myself was part of a team that won gold in Career Pathways, which is really exciting because Erin will talk about this later. We kind of have a legacy in it, but also Career Pathways is a really good way for shops like environmental science to show off what we do because we don't have a technical competition. So just like showing how excellent we are in our field is super exciting, especially at the state level.
Hi, I'm Erin Goodwin. I'm the media specialist of our chapter and I, me and my team won the Career Path Showcase for Art and Communications. And just some special shout outs from the states. We had every career path showcase team from Minuteman earned a medal. The Career Path Showcase Natural Resources and Agriculture Team from Minuteman won gold for the fourth year in a row. And every student from Biotechnology and Advanced Manufacturing Program who competed at states earned a medal. On top of that, Minuteman won the first ever Biotechnology Quiz Bowl in Massachusetts. Freshman Rishi D. Francisco beat 29 other students at the related math technical competition. Most of those people most likely older than him. And Carly Sanders won two gold medals at states for action skills and T-shirt design.
Just realized I started talking muted, sorry. So now we're on to nationals. We're getting really excited about that. Like I said, both Kaitaki and Erin are a part of gold winning Career Path Showcase teams. So we have a total of 12 students advancing on to nationals in Georgia. We're taking four advisors to Chaperone. I believe since we don't have this vote scheduled this month, that you'll see us again next month to ask for formal permission to take the students to nationals. And we just wanted to give a heads up that we are working with the business office. Nikki Andrade has been so awesome in trying to help us figure out where money can come from, how to adjust. We've raised a bunch of money. We did a double good popcorn fundraiser that was really lucrative. Our, my school bucks does a pickle juice donation type fundraiser and we had really good luck with that as well. We have two more fundraisers on the books, so we're working on trying to offset that cost as best we can. But Minuteman has been incredibly supportive and proactive in meeting with us to look at what it's going to cost to send these students and hopefully help us to fund this experience for those, the, those 12 students that are coming with us. So the main fundraiser that we're looking at going forward is a film screening of Inundation District. And this is an environmental film that is very, it pertains very well to the Career Path Showcase project for natural resources and agriculture. So we are looking to screen that to the public, charge for admissions, we'll do some concessions, tentatively scheduled for May 31st. And we're hoping that that will bring in some money, not only to offset the cost, but it's also another community collaboration and industry partner experience that our students can then add to their project to take on. So as always, we just want to say thank you.
What is a, what is a pickle juice fundraiser?
So my school bucks is the name of the, the company where it's how our students pay for certain things. So it's, it's the system that's set up for lunches and things like that. They've changed their name to pickle juice. So when we put up the fundraiser, it comes up as pickle juice, which is not sure where they came up with that. It's enjoyable, but it's an interesting choice.
Not drinking jars of pickle juice as well.
Nope. And that's the first thing that comes to mind, I will say. We were all like, that's really what they're going with? Okay. So we just want to thank the school committee again, as we did before we went to states. Thank you for always supporting us in this endeavor. My co-advisors Emily Cottwall and Denise D'Ambrugia are so thankful for all of the support that we get from the school and the school committee to help students that are super dedicated. Both Erin and Kaitaki worked incredibly hard all the way through states and we're really proud to see these kids move on to the next step. So thank you for everything you do that makes what we do possible.
Comments or questions? Alice?
Good luck at nationals.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
All right.
Great. So we have a lot of our upcoming events shared by the students already, but there's two more I just want to hit on. So we had our Rotary Club Scholarship Lunch. So this happened last Monday. Two of our guidance counselors were able to go with our students, which is great. The criteria for the scholarship was based on grades, financial needs, extracurricular activities and community service. So we had three Minuteman seniors receive the scholarships. You'll see a lot more students from the picture because we also invite students from Minuteman, I'm sorry, from Lexington Christian Academy and also Lexington High School. So it's nice to have kind of three of the Lexington-based high schools all together at Minuteman to kind of showcase our school, which has always been nice. um, all together at Minuteman to kind of showcase our school, which has always been nice. Um, so Emma Karati from Environmental, uh, she received a scholarship. Um, Aria Di Francesco also received a scholarship and then Keith um, Palmer Poirier um, also received a scholarship. So we've had a great um, partnership with Rotary over the past couple of years. Um, as River had mentioned, we had a dunk tank there today. Um, in the Rotary Club is sponsors the dunk tank for us, which we use as a fundraiser. Uh, this year the fundraiser went towards um, ALS, ALS um, funds to collect for our community service group, which was really nice. So it's been really great working with the Rotary Club. They've been super helpful and a huge partner for us and they always do well for our students, um, able to get them some extra money for their post-secondary plans, uh, which has been great. And then uh, just our senior sign out. I couldn't find a better pitcher than uh, my friend Sonic the Hedgehog here. Um, so they are ready to go, um, our seniors. Um, so this week started kind of the senior sign out procedures. Um, so they conduct exit interviews up in guidance this week, uh, where we gather their contact information. They talk about their future plans. They give us some feedback on their experience at Minuteman. Um, they also do a really nice thing where they uh, give the name of a staff member who made a really big impression or just wanted to thank um, at the end of their high school careers and we share those out with the teachers, which is always nice to see. Uh, May twentieth, they'll be doing their academic sign out, so they make sure that their grades are all in order and that they return all their materials and supplies. Uh, May twenty-first and twenty-second are kind of funky days that they're MCAS days. And then May twenty-third is when we have their career and technical education majors and their final sign out. So their shop teachers will sign them out. That they've turned in all their materials. They've completed their senior project. They're done with their senior portfolio. Uh, they go to the gym, they get signed up with the athletic director, the library, the IT department, also the nurse. Uh, then their very last stop of the day uh, is their guidance counselor where they receive their cap and gap, uh, which is always exciting to then bring back um, when they come back the following week for graduation practice. Uh, so that's kind of wrapping up, could be wrapping up with our seniors next week, uh, which is kind of crazy to think about, but they're very excited to start the process. Um, any questions on the senior sign out or the scholarship?
Alice.
Um, do the senior portfolios these days turn out to be virtual or are they paper?
So right now our senior portfolios are virtual. Um, they're stored in OneNote notebooks, but after our seniors graduate, they're all um, stored in Adobe. Um, they have a online portfolio, uh, which is really cool. Um, so the seniors can have it when they graduate. They're easily um, accessible and easy to share with future employers, uh, which is really nice. We did do the paper version for years and then just realized that it just wasn't worth the times. Uh, and it wasn't the greatest storage system either. So this way kids can easily find letters of rec. They can find that copy of their resume. Um, all that type of stuff is available right at their fingertips to send off.
Thank you.
Alright, um, that's the end of the principal's report.
Okay, just one, one comment. Um, uh, so it is, it is terrifying to me that we are in the middle of May and graduation is only a few weeks away. Now, school committee members, you did get a notice about your invitation to attend graduation. And what we do as school committee members is we rotate and stand up there and we get to hand out the diplomas. And if you have not done that, it is uh, quite an experience. Uh, going to a Minuteman graduation. I would say that Minuteman graduations are the best that I've seen in any of the high schools I've or basically colleges uh, that I've been to. Uh, it's a combination of how they run them and the attitude of the kids and the relatively small class size. So most graduation ceremonies, when I was a teacher or doing other things, I, you know, dreaded going to, but the Minuteman one is a kick. And if you have not done, school committee members, to hand out the diplomas, I would advise you uh, this year or next year, whatever, to be one of the people who accept that invitation and go on the stage and hand, help hand out the diplomas. I'm sure that anybody who's been there doing that would, Alice and others would say the exact same thing and Pam and Steve and all the others who have done it, right? Okay, great. So thank you very much for your report. And that brings us to the fun of finance report. Steve.
Alrighty, um, finance committee met last Thursday, the uh, the seventh. Um, kind of later than usual, but staff was, as we already talked about, hopping around to nine town meetings, including I, I think like five last week or something like that. So uh, uh, we did receive a uh, update on our town meetings, which I know you guys are gonna hear in, in a couple of minutes. Um, and you'll also uh, uh, will receive a presentation on the audit. Uh, uh, the finance committee reviewed kind of a one pager uh, done by our auditor to kind of try to summarize all those pages in an audit as to, as to what's important and what, what you should know. So uh, that's in your packet as well. Um, we also uh, reviewed the third quarter uh, bank re- reconciliation report and everything looks uh, it, it fine and is what in terms to all our, all our bank accounts. Um, one thing, uh, the finance committee is going to um, uh, kind of focus on over the summer is uh, looking at uh, trying to get um, uh, a management firm for our OPEB trust fund. Uh, we, we had interviewed some firms in the winter, but with the budget and whatnot, uh, we did not put out an RFP. So we're gonna be working on that uh, uh, during the summer months and hopefully come out with uh, uh, somebody who can uh, get a good uh, bang for our buck on our OPEB uh, OPEB funds. Um, so that pretty much concludes my report. I don't know who's gonna give the town meeting update and then obviously we'll have the the audit report by our auditor Scott McIntyre.
Well, with the permission of the school committee, I would like to take the audit report out of order and do that next and we can chat all we want to about how the town budgets went. If there's no objection, then I will assume unanimous content, consent, and I will introduce Scott McIntyre, our auditor. And I think he has mostly good news for us this year.
Uh, good evening. Uh, thank you very much. Uh, Jeff Scott McIntyre, partner with, with Markham, the uh, independent auditors for the, the school district. Um, and as was mentioned just a few minutes ago, um, we met with the finance subcommittee about a month ago and walked through a number of the reports in a fair amount of detail. And I also think I heard the finance committee chair say included in your package was a kind of a one-page summary. Uh, it's something we put together and honestly, we'll probably use it a lot going forward. Um, and, and really that's what I'm gonna focus on tonight. I, I'm gonna share my screen uh, with permission of, of, of the chair and uh, just to go over one page. But I think it's really important to understand what the documents, what our deliverables are to you and what each of them, each of them says. Um, there are really four pieces of, to the, to the uh, deliverables that we provided based on the audits that we performed. The first one is what we call our governance letter. Uh, and that is required communication. When I say required, it's required by our professional standards. That letter tells you that we followed generally accepted auditing standards as promulgated by um, the AICPA as well as, which is the American Institute of Certified Public Accountants, pardon me for the uh, acronyms, as well as um, generally accepted government auditing standards. There are some similarities. There are a lot of similarities between the two standards, but there are some differences that we must adhere to. Uh, also in that communication, we talked with you about risks that we identified. We talked about the estimates that are included in the financial statements, are the fact that we're independent of you um, and something relatively new to the, to the governance letter is speaking with you about uh, non-audit services. Um, you know, they are, they are Minuteman's financial statements, but we assisted the school district as we do with virtually every school district and city and town that we work with in, in the Commonwealth of Mass and throughout New England. We actually helped with the preparation of the financial statements. But our professional standards require that I communicate that to you as a non-audit service. The school district has the skills, knowledge and expertise to do it. It just sort of has become in, in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts uh, very common for the audit firms to assist our, our clients with that process. Uh, that, what, that communication al- also goes on to tell you that uh, there were no difficulties that we encountered during the course of our audit and that there were no significant audit adjustments as a result of the work that we performed. Um, I think the second report that I went through in, in detail with the financial statements, with, with the uh, finance committee is, is the financial statements and um, I'm gonna share my screen for a second if that's okay. And while I get there. Sorry for the delay, folks. Had to find the right screen to share with you. Um, you know, I'm not, I'm, I'm not gonna walk through the opinion. It starts on, on page one, but that really is the highlight. And as we reviewed with the finance committee about a month ago, our opinion is what is known as a clean or technically it's called an unmodified opinion. Uh, there are no modifications to your financial statements and being prepared in accordance with GAAP. With the finance subcommittee, I talked about the long-term perspective, financial statements. Mostly that's about uh, your, your, your pension liability. A year ago it was a pension asset. This year it's a pension liability and your, and your OPEB asset. The focus though, that most people turn to uh, is, is, is print page fourteen or PDF page sixteen. It's the first column of numbers here and it's the general fund, which is of course the, the chief operating fund. And most readers are gonna instantaneously focus on the third number up from the bottom. You have a total fund balance and liability there, so the unassigned fund balance is the third number up from the bottom. Uh, with the June thirty, twenty twenty-three account balance of two million, two million, two point two, almost two point three million dollars. It's important to note that uh, that's an increase of almost a million dollars over June thirty, twenty twenty-two. And that increase was driven by positive budgetary results that were a little bit softened by uh, some E and D that were used uh, for, for fiscal year twenty-four. So the, the two point two million dollars represents enough about eight percent, which I think that came down in, in, in early fiscal year twenty-four. Uh, but it certainly shows a strong balance sheet for the, for the school district as of June thirty, twenty twenty-three. Um, I'm gonna pause with the sharing of the screen and go back to sort of the outline that um, we prepared and I believe are, are a part of the packages. Uh, the, the third document is, is what, what we call your single audit report. As a recipient of, of federal grants and, and one who expends federal grants, professional standards require that we report on two issues. Uh, there is two reports in what I call the single audit report. The first is required by generally accepted government auditing standards and that report requires us to report to the school committee any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses in your internal control structure. And I'm very happy to report, as you can see in the detail of, of, of the report, we did not identify any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies as a result of our work. The second report in there uh, is required by uniform guidance. Uniform guidance uh, is really, uh, it's, it's the policies and procedures in the administration, how you administer the expenditures of your federal awards. And again, professional standards require that we uh, evaluate the internal controls and test your compliance with uh, the Office of Management and Budgets, their, their, their uniform guidance. And like the, the yellow box, like the internal control report, uh, our report for uh, required by uniform guidance, uh, reads that we did not identify any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in your internal control over compliance of federal grants, nor did we find any compliance, any areas where you were not in compliance with fe- federal grants. Uh, so again, a good report in the, the two reports included in what I generally, generally refer to as the single audit report. And, and the last of the deliverables that we provided to, to, to the school district was our end of the year report. This is technically called in, in, in auditor, auditor speak, it's called in agreed upon procedures. That's I just wanted to share that with you. Uh, that's probably not all that important. Uh, but Ma- the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education has a compliance supplement for audit firms to go through any organization like Minuteman or someone mentioned the town of Lexington earlier, the town of Lexington's school department would go through this, where we would evaluate uh, the preparation and the internal controls surrounding the preparation of your end of the year, year report. There are approximately twenty-two or twenty-three, um, that's not a precise number, compliance steps that we need to go to, to evaluate the completeness and accuracy of the end of the year report that is of course sent to, sent to Desi and there's some un- incredible statistics in there. Um, and like the balance of the reports I've talked about tonight, uh, we found that the preparation of your June thirty, twenty twenty-three end of the year report, we did not find any, any compliance issues with that. So our agreed upon procedures is that you did what you were supposed to do in the preparation of, of, of that report. That's a, that's a really fast overview. Um, I have all, I have essentially all the reports on a monitor here. If the, anyone in the committee would like me to go into further detail, I went into a, you know, quite a bit more detail with the finance subcommittee, so I wanted to keep it a little bit brief tonight. But if you have questions or would like me to evaluate a, a particular page of the financial statements in more detail, I will be happy to try to do so. And with that, I'll turn it back to the chair.
Um, any questions, members? Alice.
My, my question is, how often do you find that there are significant weaknesses or um, material weaknesses, sorry, or significant deficiencies or um, not clean audits? Like, I'm very proud of our business office for having this, this record and I just was curious, like, is it common to find problems?
Um, we, we find them occasionally. Um, you know, the evaluation of internal controls is over a period of time. Um, and there hasn't been a lot of turnover in the finance area in a couple of years at Minuteman. But oftentimes when organizations um, have turnover in key, key positions, uh, that's when there can be some some breakdown in controls. Um, and I, I get, I'm not predicting that, but based on my experience, that's what I see, that in general. And I've been doing audits in the Commonwealth for a awfully long time. Many years ago, they, you know, significant deficiencies and material weaknesses were really quite common. But in the past decade at least, maybe a little bit longer than that, as accounting systems have matured um, and, and um, and systems have just gotten better and there's been more awareness towards the importance of internal controls. Uh, they, the, the volume of significant deficiencies or material weaknesses has certainly come down. But, and again, I'm not, it's just based on experience. Um, watch if there was ever turnover. That's when you really need to make sure that your internal controls stay, stay strong.
Thank you. That was very informative.
Wonder if Superintendent Mahoney would like to comment a little bit on um, uh, the quality of our, our audits when he first arrived?
Well, uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. We, we did have some areas that uh, we needed to focus on intently. Um, that to Scott's point, there, there was some turnover at the time there and uh, it, it did require uh, significant amount of work with the, the then chairman of the finance committee at that time. Who is now our chairman. But uh, fortunately we've been able to turn that corner and I, I wanna thank Nikki and her staff uh, for sustaining that moving forward. It's uh, I know Nikki puts an awful lot of time in making sure that clients with all of our internal controls. And um, and, and I just wanna publicly acknowledge her, um, for, for her work on this audit.
So um, Superintendent Mahoney is being very modest. He did a, a gangbuster job in dealing with a new computer system, a new auditor and uh, the, the state of some of our controls when he first arrived here and he, he fixed that. And um, I can tell you that the information we get in the finance committee, I'm sure that Steve will agree with me from, from um, Superintendent Mahoney and from Nikki, has been really stellar.
Absolutely.
Um, so I would concur with your um, uh, statements. Any other questions regarding the um, the audit in which we have a, a clean letter? Very well then, uh, Scott, thank you so very much for two very concise and informative presentations.
Thank you. Have a good evening everyone.
We look forward to working with you in the future. Thank you very much. Alright. So uh, these are, these are good news reports and didn't always used to be. Interim super, oh, um,
Town meeting update.
Right, uh, yeah, town meeting updates. Thank you.
Nikki, are you doing that? Who's doing that?
Yeah, I will if that's um, okay. Uh, just wanted to um, happily report, I did include in the packet um, that we had eight of our nine member towns at the time. Um, we hadn't gone to Stowe, which was on Saturday, so we now have nine of nine unanimously um, voted uh, member towns passing our budget. So we have an approved budget. Um, it does only require two-thirds towns, but we, you know, have historically in the past have had unanimous support. So very happy to report that. Um, you know, we've attended the, the finance committee and town meetings as requested, um, prepared PowerPoint presentations and um, answered questions. So um, you know, thank you for the school committee's um, support. um, of the budget and, you know, very happy to report that our FY twenty-five budget um, is approved.
Right, so. Any comments or questions? Very good. So that effort is now complete after many, many months of extremely hard work and uh, communications. Very good. Uh, interim superintendent's report, Kevin Mahoney, and I just, I note that um, Superintendent Elect Driscoll is not here today, she's attending a ceremony honoring her son and others. So that is why she is not here today. So I understand that the principal search process report will actually be given by Mr. Mahoney.
Yeah, thank you, uh, Mr. Chair. Um, just wanted to uh, update the uh, the committee and, and the, the public on where we are with the principal search. We um, decided to repost and extend the deadline for uh, applicants for, for the position until uh, Friday the seventeenth. We did go through rounds of interviews and we're uh, continuing uh, that review. It's a very tough, uh, tough process. We've uh, looked at and considered a number of really strong candidates. Um, and we're being um, uh, very particular about the uh, the, the candidate that we would like to, to move forward in this position. So we, uh, uh, principal uh, interview search committee uh, that handled the first round uh, will be um, interviewing any of the candidates um, that meet the qualifications for the position, that being obviously being licensed and inexperienced that in the search committee, which did a fabulous job with the first round. This is the group that consisted of students, staff, um, uh, parents, uh, the school committee rep, uh, really did a fabulous job and it, it, it showed that the work that they did when we, when we moved candidates through the process, they were really uh, well vetted. And we, we uh, were, we think that the process works well and we'll be uh, continuing that process next week. Um, there was a second round of interviews with the uh, central office group that um, we're not going to go through this time around. Instead, when the uh, when the interview search committee team is interviewing candidates, the central office group as well as myself and Heidi will be uh, at the interviews as silent observers, if, if you will. So that the finalists that come out of that will be uh, interviewed directly by myself and uh, and Heidi. So um, it's moving along. Um, and we will keep you posted as uh, the developments warrant. That's my report.
Questions or comments? None, okay.
Uh, next item I'm going to ask uh, Erin Dawson to give an update or will we have our, our admissions?
And Erin is on mute. Now she's hearing her screen.
Sorry, I wanted to share my screen and then unmute. Hello. Thank you, everyone, for having me today. Um, the last time I was here to share an update with you was three fifteen, so almost two months to the day. Um, and we had a hundred and seventy-five students who accepted admission through our in-district towns. We are now two months later. Um, and as we, you know, had suspected, we are almost um, at our new family and student orientation this Saturday. We have had some drop-off. Um, so we are currently at one sixty-three for our current in-district students. Um, we have, you'll see the Lexington number is highlighted as we were able to offer admission to two late applicants very early on in the process. Um, and so that number did go up there for all offers. Um, they did accept. We do have two additional offers that we sent out yesterday to in-district students and I have an interview with somebody tomorrow. So there is a, you know, good chance that the one sixty-three can go up to um, you know, just even one sixty-six by later this week. Um, and we are going to continue to monitor all of our in-district late applicants as they come in very closely. Uh, that does leave us though, with the expectation that we were hoping to really have a hundred and eighty-five at the start, knowing that one seventy-five would be our day one number as students in the summer tend to withdraw. Um, so we're in the process of completing the application process and offering an additional twenty acceptance letters to those out of district students who completed their applications, continuing with getting the chapter seventy-four signed through their superintendent at their sending districts. Um, so we are continuing that process and hoping to do that to get to the one eighty-five number, again, knowing that we will be at the one seventy-five for that first day of school. We will continue to put a priority to any of our in-district late applicants. They will continue to, you know, go through the process and be offered a seat. So that's something that we will continue to monitor all summer long. We will stay very close to that. There was a lot of learnings for me through this process this year, especially from a marketing point of view, um, looking at things differently. We had applicants from ten different private schools, which is something that we don't typically target. Um, and that's something that I'd like to start taking a look at more deeply next year. How can we get with, to their guidance counselors with brochures? How can we get a time to sit and speak with those students who perhaps are in our district? We also would like to have more involvement with the middle schools after our open house. We tend to speak to these families and speak to these students so early on. We leave them very excited, as many of the principals said to us. And then we don't talk to them again and we expect applications to be in, in February. So we've come up with a plan for a few of our districts for coming in at lunchtime, setting up a table, having some of our student ambassadors with us. And really just continuing to have an open conversation with students through the process. Um, we'd like to attend more meetings hosted by the middle school principals for parents. They do a lot of coffee meetings. They do a one principal does a podcast. So we would like to be on those. We have engaged with the principals about engaging with them as early as the seventh grade parents, kind of getting in there, explaining to them, getting them into our summer programs so they can see what we're about, really engaging on a longer level. Uh, more presence in any town function and such as Lexington Day. It doesn't need to just be admissions driven. It's a chance to get our kids out there to show our districts what we're doing and also push admissions and applications. Um, we want to continue encouraging shadow days for students who are unclear if this is the place for them. We had a lot of success and a lot of good turnarounds from students who did ask for a shadow day and the students who participated from Minuteman. Um, like, once again, they're just amazing students who want to show what our school can do. So they really worked very hard um, to show these eighth graders what we're all about. And we will be opening applications now that we have fixed them um, in mid-August, so a bit earlier. And we would like to push that digitally since we've grown our digital footprint. Very um, large, kind of really taken in everything we can do with the district within our districts um, on their Facebooks and Instagrams and, and really grew our community there. So that's something that I'm really diligent about pushing this summer. Um, and then promotion through partnerships such as the Bolts and ACT. Those partnerships we have, they're renting our buildings. They have students who are in district, really working with them to make sure we always have you know, brochures outside of our door, they're in our building and just kind of working with them to push when our open house is, et cetera. Um, so those are things that we will be starting, that really is this summer. Does anybody have any question?
Alice?
Uh, what is ACT?
Oh, it's the Arlington Children's Theater? They're a rental partner.
And I think Sharon's hand up.
Um, Erin, can you go back a slide to the number of applicants? Sorry, yeah. So I was just curious, it looks like in many districts, all of the, oh no, I'm sorry. So the slot allocation is how many we had and then the offers was how many actually were offered. Okay. I was, when I had first looked at it, I thought that Dover had ten applicants and we only took two, but now I realize it was that there's ten slots and there was only two. Okay. Sorry about that. Thank you.
That's okay.
Any other questions or comments? I'm going to hear more about this, I believe, in Pam's report a little bit later. Or at least more on these topics. Very good, Erin. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Look forward to you making some of these improvements and how marketing works. It's a very interesting list and um, I'll look forward to it very much. Thank you.
Uh, next item on our agenda is just a quick update that the committee did here, a uh, a report from Bureau on the State Opportunities Act. It was a presentation that we made back in March. Um, we filed the uh, we filed the paperwork, the uh, the application for the uh, for the uh, State Opportunity Act grant. And, and that has been accepted by the uh, by DESE. Uh, it's a twenty-two page submission. If members would like to uh, receive a copy of that, you can certainly reach out to Julia and she'll follow up. Um, and if the committee is interested in any more detailed uh, follow-up presentation on there, kindly advise schedule it for a future agenda.
Okay. Any comments or questions on this item? Very good.
Next item is our annual rule um, on school choice. Uh, this has to be taken every year um, by regulation. And we have in the past consistently voted not to participate. So before you, under item D of my uh, reports, is the uh, is the, is the vote uh, being proposed that uh, the committee may want to consider as a
Yes. Would have somebody like to make the motion not to participate in school choice program as written in the agenda? Alice?
I make the motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Alice?
Just so newer members of the committee know, the reason why this vote ends up being not to approve school choice is because the tuition for school choice has not changed since nineteen ninety-three.
Well, it's five thousand dollars, or it used to be five thousand dollars. And as you know, it costs more than five thousand to educate a student at Minuteman. I should point out though, something very interesting happened a few weeks ago. There's a dick, big debate in the city of Newton as to due to a client declining enrollment, they should participate in school choice. And uh, which they've never done and accept like, you know, fifty or seventy students under this program. And for a while there, it looked like they may actually vote to pass it, but then the political winds changed and they voted not to do so. I just find it very interesting that they were considering uh, participating in this program that they have not been interested in as anytime I can, I can remember. And by the way, we used to, we did use to participate in this program a number of years ago and I will not go into that story at this time. Uh, but it's an interesting story, some other time. Uh, so all right, we have the um, the vote on the table. Are there any other comments or questions? I don't want to forget to vote on this one. That'd be a bad mistake. Very well then, Pam?
I'm Nurse Acton, yes. Erica LZ Bolton, yes.
Steve Willdo conquered, yes.
Veronica Braunkaster, yes.
Sharon Musto Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stulenieden, yes.
Alice DeLuca Stowe, yes.
I do have one comment for the superintendent. Maybe he knows the answer to this, maybe he doesn't. Um, the dude, you have to vote on this by June first. Can we vote on it in March instead of uh, in April instead of May? Just, just so we don't like miss it.
We'll uh, we'll make a note of that. I don't believe that it's a uh, that there's a restriction on how early you can vote it, but um, we'll double check that and we'll, we'll note if there are future gems.
Okay, thank you. So I'd be much happier if this was done, you know, at least a month early in case we missed it and we have to come back. Great.
Very good.
Surplus property.
Yes, last item is the disposal surplus property pursuant to our policy. We would need uh, authorization from the school committee to uh, dispose of uh, property that's currently not being used uh, in, in, in our shop or classroom spaces or maintenance areas for that matter. Um, and have value uh, so that we could then move on to um, putting this out for uh, for auction. Uh, there's the list there um, for your consideration, just a couple of things to note. Um, uh, there, there are some uh, welders that we, we're, um, we have on the list. We have upgraded the welders. They were paid with a, as a state funded grant, so any proceeds we received from them, we have to reimburse the state fifty percent for that. And uh, a lot of the items listed on the lower part of the green bar is related to the, the, the weight room we've, we've upgraded. So um, if there are any questions on particular items, we'd be happy to answer them. Michelle Resendez, our director of operations, put this together. Um, but uh, outside of that, if the committee authorizes us to move forward, we will um, we will pretty much sell any of these items.
Let's put the motion on the table and then we'll have uh,
So moved.
Second.
Uh, questions and comments? I do have one comment. One of the things that's interesting, if you look at the report, that got cut off, it was just split into two pages, was that I believe that this is true, that when we get a um, some of these um, equipment under a grant and at the end of the grant, we sell it off, we have to give some of the money back to the um, government. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so that you'll see in the second page, it got cut off. It should be all the way across. You'll see that one of the items is money that is going back to the government. I just wanted to point that out to you. I think Sharon, did you, who had your hand up? Was it Sharon? No. Anybody have their hand up? Yes, uh, Charlene.
I just want to say that this is a great idea. Um, and I'm, I'm glad you're doing it. I did get to see some of the overstock we have personally and um, you know, time to make room for new things. So move, help the out. So just uh, agree that it's a great idea.
Can I add some of my surplus property to some of these things that you're doing? I've got quite a bit in here.
I think we're pretty well uh, got at useful with this list, but um, good luck on yours.
Okay, so that's a no. Okay, good. Well, I can take a hint. Any other questions or comments on the motion on the table? Singing on, roll call, vote?
Ham Nurse Acton, yes. Erica LZ Bolton, yes.
Steve Willdo conquered, yes.
Charlie Cabral Lancaster, yes.
Sharon Musto Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stulenieden, yes.
House DeLuca Stowe, yes.
Okay, very good.
Thank you. That concludes my report.
Very good. Subcommittee reports. Policy Subcommittee, Alice DeLuca.
So um, I understand that the um, administration has completed review of section I and we are Sharon and I and Charlene, who's our kind of um, person who comes but is not a member of the subcommittee. Um, we're, as soon as we get those, we will schedule a meeting to review them and then they're coming to you. I keep saying that, but it's really true. But they're coming. So that's the end of that report.
I just want a question of that, Alice. Yes, I, I just to get people an idea, about how many pages is section I?
No, it's, it's a good big chunk of paper, like.
Yeah, so this much, you're going to be approving.
Yeah, but they're, they're really meaty, Jeff. You're going to love them.
Love it. Thank you so much.
And some of them, some of them, we're going to have a motion to delete them because they're nonsense. So that, that'll be good.
Okay, limiting policies that are nonsense. So we should have a separate line.
Yeah, it's, it's a really hard, you know, it's a fine line, but there are some of them that are just, they don't make any sense for Minuteman, so. Um, anyway, that's, that's one capital planning, a capital planning met recently and um, the main topic that you should know about right now is that there, there, there is a ten-year plan in the works to bring to you and like a maintenance ten-year capital plan in the works. So I just want to emphasize how important this is to do. A lot of school districts, they build a new building and then they're very excited, very happy about the new building and they wake up ten years later and say, whoops. You know, we forgot to maintain these things and now we've got to do, you know, a minor little renovation again because we messed up. So Minuteman is not going to do that. And we're doing a ten-year plan. So Michelle Resendez is going to tell you more about that.
Hi, everybody. Um, yeah, we had done um, you know, looking at the building and the facilities and um, we're making a conscious decision to start planning, doing some capital planning for the future. Um, what, what, what I did is that I, you know, um, actually Ford had mentioned a company and then I contacted two other companies to um, get some quotes uh, from them for our capital planning. What the, hold on, I just got to grab my paper, sorry. Um, what each of the companies are, are looking to do is that they'll come in and um, with some of their representatives and and with some of their representatives and they'll walk the property and examine all of our equipment, the infrastructure, as well as the actual equipment and structure of the building itself, along with our fields and our other properties. The quotes from each of them included all of our buildings on our sixty-five acres or sixty-six acres. They would do an inspection and then they would provide us with documentation and a report. They would come up, they would give us information, including dimensions, materials, age and condition of our, everything on our property. They would, they would plan capital activity using like standard intervals and give us the analysis that we need so that we can properly plan forward. The company that we are going to end up going with is On-Site Insight. And they provided us with an example report that really met all of our needs. And they're very well versed in doing these capital assessments on schools and universities and everything like that. So if any of you have any questions, I mean, it's, it's pretty straightforward. We're, then we'll use that capital plan in our discussions with the capital planning committee and each year when we're trying to plan our capital budget.
Yes, my only comment is that this is very, very desirable. It is something that I've wanted for a very, very long time. And I'm, I couldn't be happier that we're moving forward with it. We found a company to help us out that has a good track record, that we know some people who they've been very happy with their work. And we really do need to maintain this incredible facility that we've been essentially gifted. So this is how you do it. Okay, thank you very much. Which brings us to EMAC, Enrollment Membership Access and Capacity. Pam?
Okay, the wonderfully named EMAC Committee met last night. And we went over the report that you heard today from Erin. And when it comes to admission, we never know how the admission winds are going to blow. And while we are still seeing a strong response from our member districts, we're not in the same position that we were last year where we had a waiting list from member districts and, and the year before where, you know, we were able to meet our goals solely from member district students. And, you know, and we're seeing, and it really varies. You know, we have some member towns that are, that this year are increasing the number of students that we're sending. And, you know, some towns have been sending a little bit less. You know, which brings us to the current list of out of district students. And we did have sort of a discussion about the pros and cons of, of admitting out of district students. You know, we talked about what's best for Minuteman and what's best for students. We talked about the financial implications as well as the political issues of admitting out of district students and decided that what's best right now is to stick to the plan that we had talked about back in last November, which was to aim for a class this year of one hundred and seventy-five students, which means going through and admitting, while, while always prioritizing in district students, but looking this year to be admitting out of district students so that we will be able to get to that one seventy-five. And as Erin mentioned, that means, you know, at this point, going to maybe about one eighty-five, knowing that there's going to be some drop off. So, so we do have those twenty-six out of district students and Erin will be going through that. We also talked about the admission software and the fact that this year there were some hiccups with the software and that this summer is going to be an opportunity for Erin. And, you know, once Heidi gets on for Heidi to really work together to try and figure out, well, what's the best way of addressing the software issues and moving forward so that we will be in a strong position? And the committee will be meeting again at the end of the summer, you know, late summer, early September. And they'll be one of the issues that we'll be reviewing. I also want to call out, Erin went very quickly through her slide that was her learnings. I just want to call out some of those. There's some, you know, really insightful topics on there that Erin, we spent some time talking about how Erin can actually operationalize. And, you know, one of the key things, there are a number of topics on there, but in particular, one of them was, you know, feedback that she had been getting from some of the middle school principals that comes out, you know, she does a presentation. The kids get so excited, get really excited. And then there's quite a bit of time before they hear about us again. So one of the things in that kind of list of learnings is how do we keep that excitement up? So we don't get, you know, the students really excited and then it's a long time before they hear from us. So really looking forward to sort of, you know, really improving our process by figuring out the best way of really engaging with potential students. So I think, I think that is it for my committee report. I don't know if Steve and Jeff, if you have anything else to add?
I think that was a very good summary. I was also very impressed with some of Erin's suggestions moving forward. We did talk a lot about dealing with software and software companies are not as professional as we would like them to be, and that unfortunately is the state of the world. And we have to work around it. They got some late workarounds because this was a big surprise to them last year. This year will not be a surprise and they will be using some of the workarounds that they learned. And maybe they'll get some improvement from the software company, but don't count on it. Because that is right. Alice?
Will you be having people test the software who aren't at all associated with it, have never used it before? Just on, on different pieces of equipment and from different towns, just to see, you know, whether they can manage to try to register having never been associated with it at all?
That's a great idea, Alice. I think for anything we explore going forward, I would love to have more involvement from IT in the process of going through the new company that we would choose eventually. But then for our new, for our current application that we have, I know for myself, one of the first things I did, I come from a very digital background. I come from a very mobile-first background in corporate marketing. That was the first thing I tried to do was fill out the application on my phone, especially as a parent. When do we have time to pull out our laptops after work? We are on our phones as our kid is saying, apply now. We're sending lots of, or at least I did change some of our marketing materials to have more QR codes to take you right to our application. From there, it is easier to fill out that way, but logging on to our website to do it, it wasn't really that great. So as we do improve, I would love to share it with the EMAC committee as well to just kind of work through different types of phones even, from an Android to an iPhone. It's different. So that's a great suggestion. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Is that the conclusion of your EMAC report?
That is the conclusion of the report.
Thank you very much. It was quite a, it was quite a good meeting that we had and I'm very happy that Pam scheduled it and brought us up all today. So I appreciate that greatly. So that brings us to the end of our normal agenda and I'm going to ask for a motion to enter into executive session and not to return to open session for the following reason, to approve the draft executive session minutes of August seventeenth, twenty twenty-three. I think all we're going to need is school committee members and Julia.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Roll call vote.
Hamner Saktin, yes.
Erica Elsie Bolton, yes.
Steve Willdo conquered, yes.
Charlie Cabral Lancaster, yes.
Sharon Musto Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stulendian, yes.
Alice DeLuca, yes.
And we have a different link for this, so we're gonna cut this and go to our next link.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.